So you want to take that chair away and a glass of water?
No, Charlie will sit there if he needs to.
Okay.
Alright.
Because water's over there. Okay. You just walk away when I'm saying something.
Because water's over there.
Yeah.
There's one right here too. Alright, you're ready? And this is mine.
So they're hearing the call. Lovely.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's Auscalusa School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Charlie Comfort and I will be your moderator this evening. Tonight's forum is being hosted by Auscalusa News. Joining me onstage this evening are four candidates for Auscalusa School Board. Running on the post for Director District 3 is Sharma Carlet. Running on the post for reelection in Director District 4 is Craig Van Hulzen. Running for reelection in Director District 6 is incumbent Sean Boyer. And also running for Director District 6 is Eric Edgred. Also running for school board is Nick Hanson, who is running on the post for Director District 1. Mr. Hanson indicated that he has a conflict this evening and will not be able to participate. We respect his decision. The format for tonight's debate is as follows. Candidates will have a two-minute opening statement. After opening statements, I will ask candidate Tramish Director District for a question, and they will have 90 seconds to respond. At the end of each question, any candidate will have the opportunity to respond to what is been said. Candidates will also have a two-minute closing statement. Timing will be enforced. Questions for tonight's forum have been created by myself, the host of the forum, as well as questions submitted by readers. They have not been shared within the candidates prior to tonight's forum. We will be taking questions from the public later on this evening, and I will explain after we get to that time. And we'll begin now with opening statements with candidate Eric Edgred.
I know it should have been said before. Uh, my name is Eric Edgred and I'm running for the School Board District 6. Uh, I'd like to start out by saying that I think my co-chair is a good guy. He's just living in a small town, and he happens to be in my district, and I really would like to have the job. So, at any rate, a little about myself. Uh, I'm a farmer. I was born and raised in Auscalusa. I moved away for a couple of line jobs for a few years, and I think I had to peek on for a little while. It was a great place, Auscalusa is. A lot of what got me to move home was thinking about what a fantastic place Auscalusa is to resume. And, uh, my wife is a teacher at Auscalia Elementary. My son is a freshman at the high school. And that had a lot to do with why I decided to run for school board. I've been around for a long time, and I feel like this is my chance to get back and to find some of the freshmen. I think it's not now. Hopefully I can get to it.
Well, thank you, Eric. I guess, uh, sitting on the end doesn't mean you guys, uh, for that. Uh, I'm glad, I'm glad Eric's running. Uh, like I said, I got nothing against Eric at all. It's a small town, it's small, small areas, and live in the same part. So I'm glad, I'm glad he's up there, which we have worked with. It's a, um, school board and the youth of the community, one of the greatest programs. Wonder what it'd be like if we could put more emphasis on, on education and educating youth on what we do. A little bit about me, originally from Berlins in Iowa. Uh, my wife and I grew up down there. High school sweetheart. Came up here, kind of going in then, going football, the state, and, uh, so low community. So, uh, exactly what I was looking for, a small town, close to some, uh, bigger metropolitan areas. Going to wherever you want to do, uh, and eat. And, uh, it's a fantastic place, regular field. Have four beautiful daughters. Two of the daughters graduated, uh, from Auscalusa. One from Illinois. Two more, junior and freshman, four more years. The, uh, school activities, excited that I can look forward to. My wife Angela was sitting back there, she's probably going home already. After twenty years of raising kids, she decides she wants to go back to school and get her college education. So, kind of scary situation, I'm now sitting with a bunch of kids half their age, about the same age as her. Um, no, I'm running for elections. I was asked to a couple of years ago, there was a need, there was nobody that was running in this district. It was something I thought about. Had one get called, and, uh, I asked for, you know, participates to sit on here. Best choice ever made. Get out in front of people, out of their comfort zone. It's helped me grow as a person, hopefully help the school, the students in the area go on the board. Thank you.
I'm Sharma Carlet, and this is the new experience for me tonight, although I've been very much connected in the world of education. I have fairly recently retired from forty years in public education as a teacher at Edgo, and then working for Breaker, the evening, as a special ed consultant, and then as a regional director. So, education is, it's a passion of mine. It's something that I'm very interested in. It's where we need to really focus a lot of our attention. During this past year here in our community, I know we have had a lot of discussion about how we can attract and keep young families in our community. There's been lots of discussion about retail and so forth. But I think one of the heart of, part of the heart of the issue should be the discussion of education. Because if we don't have quality schools, quality education to offer those young families, they're not going to choose to live here. So, for me, it's very, very important.
Thanks. My name's Craig Van Hulzen. I, uh, took Charlie's place, so, and, and the last time I was at the forum, I was at the end also. So, I guess this is my place. Uh, I want to take, thank you, or take the time to thank you for the opportunity to share some of the beliefs about education at this forum. I'm committed to helping Auscalusa Community School District move forward. I've lived in Auscalusa, uh, my entire life, except for when I went to Iowa State University. I graduated, uh, Auscalusa in nineteen eighty-one, and, uh, Iowa State in nineteen eighty-five. Um, I started my thirtieth year of teaching, and I've been twenty-eight years in North Mahaska. So my teaching career kind of gives me, uh, not only a teacher perspective, but also the desire to make sure that the Auscalusa Community School District, that we're providing quality education to our students. I believe that both are essential to the success of education. In addition, I have business experience as a real estate appraiser with knowledge that is helpful in building and creating programs, as well as managing school finances. My family includes my wife, Hannah, sitting over there. Uh, I have a son, Cameron, he's at Iowa State now, and I have a daughter, Jordan. I said, uh, she's a temp girl, and she said, "No dad, I'm a sophomore." I've had the privilege to serve my community while my kids are enrolled in the district, and I ask for your vote to continue in this capacity. I'm excited about the path that Auscalusa is taking, the school district is taking, and I know we will face challenges, balancing decisions, so much best for the kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Our first question this evening will go to Director District 4 candidate Craig Van Hulzen.
And this, uh, this is how it happened last night too. You were at the end, you've also started the next question.
Craig, how should school board members interact with the superintendent, the community, and the school district employees?
I think, to answer that question, you have to be yourself. Um, the superintendent is the leader of your school. You have to have proper dialogue with him and, uh, work with him. You have to work with the school employees. We had talked about in our last board goal that we wanted to try to get out and talk to the teachers. That was one of our goals, to see what are things that are going well, and what are things that we need to work on. So I think communication is to keep constant communication with the superintendent, with school employees, with, uh, people in the public on what's going well on these occasions.
Our next question is for Sharma Carlet. Sharma, how should a school board focus?
Their students. Uh, that's first and foremost, and primarily student achievement. Instruction, not only academically, but instruction through social skills, work together, and how to be better citizens. And it's very difficult, I think, to separate some of that, but it all needs to be done with your professors.
Turning now to our Director District 6 candidates, Sean and Eric. This is a two-part question. What is the role of the school board in Auscalusa? Are board members to have hands-on roles in running the district, or are board members meant to be more policymakers?
It's a good question, but you could bring some. Uh, I think it's delicate balance. I mean, honestly, we're here to, to vote and, you know, make a policy that affects the way the district is ran. Um, I think you have to be very cautious about going in and trying to dictate to the superintendent, administrators, on the exact way that that needs to be ran, um, as far as the hands, as far as hands-on part of that going. I don't think it's so right for me to step into a classroom and critique that teacher. But I think you shouldn't go in there and probably see what the issues that teacher is dealing with, the issues that students are dealing with. We're kind of overseers of the community, or of the education in the community. We're not necessarily the hands-on. People make it happen day-to-day. You know, that's left up to the experts, you know, superintendent being the head educator going down through, through the teachers and support staff. There, there was, it's a thousand days a day to run and, uh, keep that, keep that. It should cross that.
Would you repeat the question for me, so I can answer if that's the case?
What is the role of the school board in Auscalusa? Are board members to have hands-on roles in running the district, or are board members to be more policymakers?
Well, I would say that it's, uh, it's a little bit of both, but honestly, you know, you're kind of looking at a very, that's a bold kind of answer. Really, the school board's main function is to supervise the superintendent and, uh, to make sure that he's doing what is best for the public. But that is not even micromanaging. You know, do you have IR managers that do each other? And as far as being hands-on, I would, uh, kind of what my editor here said, you know, that not to be in and trying, oh, well, you know, you need to do this in a classroom. Well, I'm certainly not a school teacher, I don't know what to do in a classroom, and it wouldn't be appropriate for me to do so. But, uh, to do things, uh, something I've really enjoyed over the last few years is going in during the read-a-thon and reading to students in the classrooms and seeing the teachers in their classroom and the students and interacting with that, but certainly not that I'm. Thank you.
Our next question is for Craig. Craig, do you support the veto of education funding, whether that goes in the grants and stuff, why or why not?
Um, that, that's kind of a, a tough question, because here's the situation that we're in as school board members. According to Iowa law, the legislature is supposed to have a two-year budget for, uh, the school board to work on. When, uh, that didn't happen according to the timeline that they were supposed to, that put the, the real, the school boards in a real bind, because we have to set certified budgets by a certain time. The legislature decided, uh, joint legislature, both Democrats and Republicans, compromised and sent, uh, a one-time, uh, spending, uh, to the governor. The governor vetoed that, but to me, I thought that was not appropriate, because whenever, or when did he clearly state that he would not pass legislation if it was, if it wasn't a two-year? Then, um, so I was very disappointed that he made that decision. And the reason I was disappointed is because, just like I said before, had he clearly stated, "I will not sign anything if it's not a two-year deal." I think it was very, he did not communicate that, and I think it was wrong for him to veto.
We turn now to Sharma. Do you have any concerns with the district's technology offerings for students? At what point should technology offerings be upgraded?
I guess, I am not aware of exactly what the technology needs are. I know the middle school has a new, um, program with computers for the school. And, and I don't know what the replacement, radios, or, or plan for the computers, the one-to-one program. I'm not. I think along with the hardware, which makes it the district needs to keep the line is keeping the teachers up to date with the technology, because it's always changing itself, that needs to be a critical part of professional development as the year goes on.
Next for Sean and Eric. Test scores have been discussed quite frequently in the past two years in our school board. If test scores do not increase, do you believe a change in leadership is necessary, or do you support a different solution?
I don't, I don't think a change in leadership is necessarily needed. Uh, I think what the past board has done, it's called recurrent leaders accountable for those test scores and for the achievement of our students within, within the district. I got complete support of the state and Mr. Ryder as a superintendent. I've spoken with them on occasion on different things, and, and I, I think he's the right person for the job. Um, with that being said, we do, we have held on the carnival the last year, because there's been a lot of discussion on that, on test scores and student achievement. Uh, as Charlie likely pointed out in a couple of our board meetings, you know, I, I mentioned the tying salaries to student achievement. Uh, I think that's a question that's been in education for a long time. How do, how do you do that? I, I think it's a careful balance. You gotta, you gotta be literate. Don't want to teach it in there, teach it just for the test scores. You know, we got the common core, which is, you know, what's, what's come up with governors, business leaders, and universities, you know, and, and they say this is what we need out of our youth coming into, coming into, to be successful as adults. You know, so you gotta, you gotta put something into that, and, and you gotta hold them to it. We got goals, work goals of state, and we had our, uh, good state, A and M, um, average. Schools have, has goals, um, what, fourth or eleventh grade, every student's gonna be seeing one-year growth. I think that should be our minimum expectation, that every student come in regardless of where they started at, should see a full one-year growth when they finish studying in the school. If they're behind, you hope you see more, and, and I hope we got things in place to do that. I think, I think we do, I think we're going in the right direction. Well, we're definitely, definitely talking about it more, and that's what we need to do. You can't, you can't hide things that are going wrong. You gotta celebrate the things that are going wrong. And I think right now, we got things going the right direction.
I honestly did, did like to try to drop, uh, try to find the, uh, the right drift that he said. Uh, the only thing that I'd really add to that is that there comes a point where you, we often want, we know we have a problem, we want it, we want it better. But there is a point of how much patience is enough patience. And sometimes you get, some things are fast change, isn't realistic change, and sometimes it's not. And I think that accountability would be the only situation where a very fast rate is possible. And somebody was, is, was starting, certainly obviously getting paid, but it's going to say, "No, I'm just not, oh, that's not important." Well, that's not what we have there. Every single person, I believe, in Auscalusa, he cares about our students, and they want what's best for our students. They might not always agree on the best path to get there. So, uh, no, I don't think we need any change in leadership right now. I think we, uh, we're on the right path, and we just need to stay in that line and going, when is, when is the achievement, uh, up to snuff, coming up fast enough?
And our next question is for Sean and Eric. In the one-to-one program at the high school, should students be on the hook for technology repairs?
I need you to explain to me what the one-to-one program is.
It is the laptop program.
Should they be responsible for?
Correct. Should students be on the hook for technology repairs in the laptop program?
Absolutely, if it's of use. Uh, I've sat through, actually, my son took some, uh, high school courses last year when he was still in middle school, so I've sat through the orientation for, uh, for freshman twice, and I consider that the policy in place is, uh, familiar.
I agree a hundred percent. Um, as a parent, uh, three or four years ago, when we first started mentioning this, my, my second daughter went to high school, and I had some reservations about it, and it was none of my concerns, was there repairs? You know, this is, this is school property, but as, as a parent, as a student, they're responsible for taking care of it. And I think it's a good thing. The teachers have responsibility. Um, we've had to pay a few repairs on, on some stuff. Um, I think it's, the, the school's been very open and upfront with parents on that responsibility, and what the expectations of them are, and, and they're, they're high schools. I mean, they should be able to handle some of that responsibility. I mean, three, four more years, and hopefully be out of the basement, you know, on their own, on the way to create a career, or getting their own education away from home. So, you gotta, you gotta let them stand up for themselves sometimes, and be accountable with their actions.
And for Sharma. This is a two-part question. How do we entice more students to open enrollment in the Auscalusa School District? And the second part is how do we retain those who are dissatisfied by the quest for enrollment?
Did you talk to Russ about this question? Because that was one that I had with him, and I persisted about this. Because this was a question I had, um, I guess, before I could communicate, so I could make more information. Why do parents choose to open enrollment? Are they dissatisfied, size, is it a smaller district? Does it have more to do with their employment? I don't know. So I really couldn't tell you, um, what I would do, where I would go with that. But certainly, I would want to initiate some conversations with those families that have chosen that route, to see how they got there. Why did they choose to do that? And then, I could compile, and I think, um, those need to maybe be face-to-face conversations. So you can really dig deeper and ask more questions on.
And for Craig. If budget cuts are required, where would you start?
That's really a tough question, and I think, uh, the answer has to be eighty percent of your budget, your school budget, is the staff. So you really have to look hard about how can we be more efficient with staff. Uh, Mr. Ryder is kind of thinking ahead, uh, and we're doing some planning, so if we do need to cut staff, there could be some with, uh, changes in schedules or changes with, uh, certain situations. So, staff is probably the first place you have to look at. A lot's gonna depend on, you know, what kind of money we're gonna get this next year. My guess is it'll probably be very similar to what we had last year. When I was alluding to you about the veto of the governor, I really think the Democrats and the Republicans are gonna have a very hard time getting together because of what has happened in the last legislature. So I wouldn't expect a lot of money. Um, the bad thing with that is, uh, this last time, because of the tax situation, a lot of the taxes, uh, because of our certified budget, it went on the property tax. So we have to be concerned about, we don't want to be raising the property tax constantly. Um, so we need to kind of think about that also.
Thank you. And Craig, it's time. Are you set aside with school security? So why not?
Well, that, that's something I, I really haven't, uh, checked on. I've thought about it a lot. I know in North Mahaska, our building is locked down basically from about eight fifteen till three fifteen. And every area that, uh, that there's access to the building, you have to be bought in. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure if that's how it is in high school, or the middle school, or the elementary, but a lot of school systems are taking that approach down because of what's happened in the past. Uh, they know that they do have the fog system where they have to get access in, but I'm not sure how it is for outside people wanting to come in. So it's a good question, I don't know.
And our next question is for Sharma. What is your vision for public education?
I guess, public education is their responsibility, is their charge to take all those darlings up, walk into the building, and move them as far as you possibly can academically, socially. It is to make, help them develop good citizenship skills, and to develop skills that they will use later on in their jobs.
This kind of ties into what they were talking about. I think the really, the whole of the education system today is not to teach them about facts, it's to help them think critically. You have to start feeling critical in this world. Uh, the test scores that we're testing now, a lot of it's memorization. We need students that can think for themselves and be able to think critically. So that's where I hope public education goes in the future.
And our next question is for Director District 6 candidates. As you know, next Tuesday is the school board election. If you do not get elected, what will you do? Will you stay involved? Will you run again? What are your plans?
I've thought about that, uh, a little bit since Eric, I discovered Eric is in the race, and, uh, you know, but the signs are out a little bit. No, that's good. Uh, no, I do stay, uh, plan to stay involved. If, if Eric forces, I'll completely support him, his role as Director 6, member of the school board. Um, as I support all, all the school board members, um, that would be, be there. I still got, I've got two kids in school, I mean, I still got some ties to, to the education. And I think as part of the community, we, we all should be involved in education. I mean, it'd be great if we, if everybody had the time of day to go out to school and sit in the classroom and read, or, or just help the kids, take them mental, whatever it is you do. Yeah, I just plan on, on staying involved. I plan on checking out on stuff. Met some great people, I've been on you and stuff, so open some doors, help me ask questions a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll stay involved, uh, with Auscalusa. Obviously, you know, my wife in the district, and, uh, my sunstone school system, uh, I hope to continue to, uh, keep volunteering, become in free, and I honestly enjoy that a little bit more, but, and it's the question of whether I would run again if I'm unsuccessful this time, uh, asking that. That goes to say to me, to Charles.
While we will turn now to public questions, do we have any members of the public who have a question for our candidates? Seeing none, we'll move on to some more questions. This is a question for all four of our candidates. Let's start with Sean, with Sean and Eric. Do you support any efforts to rein in union rights? Do you support any efforts to rein in union rights?
That's a good question. Um, I think at times, union can, can be a good thing. Obviously, in the past, and the history of our country has done a great benefit for us. Um, moving forward, I think there, there's still a need for that. I don't make... I don't make a strong, uh, wish to depart, uh, by these. I think for the most part, I don't see those views that are taking place by employees or school district executives that, uh, probably didn't see decades ago, uh, as far as reining in their power. I, I don't know how you can do that. The teachers are, are pretty tight drips, tight knit group, um, they like to stick together, so I don't, I don't see how you can do that.
Uh, I don't know that I would agree with what we put at the rein in, but your question brings something that I think is an issue to, uh, our district and to all of the districts is, uh, the starting pay for a teacher coming into work is really unsustainable. It's, it's barely, and I've expended all that money to go through college and everything. And there's only so much money. And I feel like, uh, at some point, we're gonna, perhaps the best thing, that we're gonna have to start paying a little bit. But I can say, as a farmer, I paid a lot of property taxes, whether I can get the income or not in that year, but no one wants to see the taxes raised. And I don't know that there is a path to do this, but maybe there could be a leveling out at some point, uh, maybe you're not, the steps that are going out, maybe they're smaller steps, and you get to work at the end of your career, and take that money and put it into the pockets of the new teachers coming in, so they're not, uh, living in their parents' basement and trying to teach. And I would actually take this to the aviation industry. They talk about making pilots worried right now. There's no pilots, or each of the, the shortages of pilots are a long to work for that little money after spending that much money to get there for a certain way. And I fear that's gonna happen with education someday, and while I don't think that the focus of the teacher has ever been, hey, I want to work, I'm gonna make a lot of money, where there could be teachers, we need to be able to answer that question.
I agree with Perry, that the pay of starting teachers is very high. We have a, a daughter who's, um, she's coming towards and has entered to be a teacher, um, up in northeast Iowa, and her beginning pay was very small, especially compared with our son's pay, who went into business. So, it is a challenge. As far as reining in rights, I don't see a real need. I would hope rather than reining in, that you would, that power, you could use that power for common goals to move education forward.
And I would answer this question about supporting union rights. I think, um, the way that the system is set up today is you negotiate, and when you negotiate, it's called give and take. So a lot of times when we negotiate with certain rights, uh, with the union, they want something, we want something, and it's just kind of a give and take back and forth. If you can't get together, then there's another process to go on to, uh, maybe it's arbitration, or arbitration continuation, and then if you still can't get together, then you go to arbitration. So there's a system too, the, the process of, of each right, the rights of the union and the rights of the school.
And Sharla and Eric answered this question, so we'll have this question for Craig and Sha. Do you find teacher pay sufficient, or should salaries be increased?
If we're having, uh, a budget problem, and we had, uh, one point to five percent increase, I don't, I understand that the theory that it's, it's a small pay, uh, for beginning teachers, but people that teach, like myself, we don't do it for the money. We do it because we wanna make a difference in, in, in the students' lives. The other hand, you also have to look at is that salary is for a nine-month position. You get paid over twelve months, but you're working nine months. So, whether that should be increased or not, I, I think, if they're willing to work for that pay, and they wanna do that, then that's the market rate. Shall we raise it? I, I don't think so. That's just my opinion. If we have a si- a system in place and we negotiated that, I think that's fine. I don't think we need to raise that.
I echo a lot of what Craig has said. Actually, when I came to West Ham, I started out, I wanted to be a teacher, I wanted to be a math teacher of all things, um, who's adding a coach. Went through a whole year of the education program there, and was drilled in my head daily that you're not gonna make any money. Being a family man at the time, I, I was like, I, I can't, I can't start out making twenty thousand dollars a year at that time. Today, I think it's up to about thirty-six thousand dollars a year in this district. It seems to be about what the starting wage just between teachers. Could be off on that a little bit, but most of what we approved seemed to be in that ballpark. That, like Craig said, that's a pretty good wage for nine months, and most of them aren't in there to make money, they're in there to influence the youth and educate them, bring them up, um, to follow all citizens and be productive in life, whether it's there for the kids. Right now, I would have to say, I think the way the salaries within our district is, is pretty good. Compared to other districts, they're higher than most. On top of that, you gotta look at the benefits, the health package thrown in. Right now, our student, our teachers and staff don't pay for their healthcare. That's a huge benefit, I think. And on top of the salaries, that's, that's a pretty good package. I, I approve many salaries set on the school board that are higher than mine, and I pay my own, my own healthcare out of it. And so to ask me if, if, if teacher salaries are too low, I, I don't think they are at the moment. I, I think they're, they're right where they, where they should. That may not be a popular thing, but that, that's why I feel, that, that's how it is.
And we're seeing we have a question here from one of our members of the public.
Hi, I'm Diane Johnson. I'm also a member of the State Board of Education, and my question is about graduation. The state publishes annually graduation numbers, and I know there's a lot of debate about whether we should be looking at test scores and whether we should be measuring people on, um, different rates. But graduation rates seem to be a pretty hard and fast number and important. Did you graduate from high school or not is going to be a predictor of whether you can be employed, it's a predictor of your income in the future, it's a predictor of whether you'll end up in the criminal system. Oscalusa's graduation rates for two thousand and fourteen, as, um, recorded by the state, so using comparisons to all other districts, the same formula, our overall graduation rate was eighty-four percent. The state average was ninety percent. We ranked in the bottom twenty of all high schools in Iowa. There are over three hundred high schools in the state of Iowa. Our IEP graduation rate, our individual education plan, most kids that are in special ed, our graduation rate was sixty-three percent. The state average is seventy-six percent. I asked you, how is it okay to say to the kids of Oscalusa that sixteen percent of you overall are not going to graduate from high school each year? And how is it okay to say that almost forty of you, if you attend a special ed class, are not going to graduate from Oscalusa High School?
That's, that's a good question, Diane, and I think we, as all schools, need to do a better job of figuring out what, um, where, I should say where, um, what path the students should take. I think part of the problem we get into is, as a society, we think that everyone should go to college, and we push for everyone to go to college. And I think in other countries, a lot of them, in about seventh grade, they figure out, are you college material, or are you not? And if you're not, they start looking at, what can you do for society as vocational? And we really need to look strongly for that with some of our kids, um, because they can have just as high-earning jobs as, as a college graduate, um, plumbers, electricians, some of those other types of jobs. We need to really look at the students and say, hey, are you really wanting to go to college, or do you wanna look at a more of a career path towards the vocational education? And get them to that, and I know they have some programs now that, uh, that they're doing welding, and they're, they're, they're finding needs of the industry, and they're training them in high school so they'll have a job when they come out. So, not just us, but I think all schools need to do a better job of that, uh, hey, when they get out, where are they going, and what are they gonna do? Anybody else want to?
I agree with that. I mean, college is for everybody. So the school has to prepare students for be productive citizens as adults, whether that's going to college, further education, or going to trade school, going right to work. I think the question was forty percent, are we satisfied with forty percent, not graduating? No. How, how can you? Unfortunately, I think Oscalusa is not one in that situation. I think there's a lot of school districts that way. Uh, just on the Department of Education website earlier this week, looking at some data, um, this past school year, the data's not published yet, but you look at surrounding schools around us, like Knoxville and Newton, I, I picked up on, very similar in demographics, um, population-wise, student enrollment, and, and we're behind those, those districts by a bunch, by a couple percentage points here and there, um, but we are behind. So, I mean, that is, that's a concern. What, what, what other school districts similar to us doing that we can improve our capital, I guess, or benefit for one of them, I guess. And I think something we need, we need to focus on, and it's been focused in the last year or more.
Yes, I would like to address particularly the piece of data dealing with IEP students. That is where most of my last part of my education, or working in education, dealt with. When we looked at data, graduation data for IEP students, frequently what we would see are students with more significant disabilities actually graduating and doing better with those numbers than our more mildly handicapped or disabled students. And I think that is in part because of the heavy emphasis on transition services that were started early on, as early as seven, eight grade for those students. That should be the case for all students, but our milder IEP students, and especially our students with behavioral social concerns, those influence that we rarely get frustrated with, maybe strapped up, and sometimes brought along for that, um, transitional piece. Again, there needs to be programs if they can relate to, that there are hands-on learners, something that they can hang on to and believe in high school when folks are becoming wagers. I always told my IEP students that my ultimate goal for them was to be paying taxes.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's anyone up here who is at all capable of anything less than a hundred percent graduation, or even high school, I mean, high school, you need to graduate high school. And if you're a common citizen, and you're that much smarter than everybody else, and you can just go out on your own, you need to graduate high school, or you just do. But I think that part of it goes to the, we need a culture, and this is honestly beyond what I think came up with the public in the school board, it's a great lofty goal, but, we need a culture of valued education, and reading to our kids at night when they're little kids, until they say, I don't want you to read to me anymore, Dad, I got my book, I'm reading, I'm into it, I got my time. And I think that our culture has just kind of devalued our education. And education isn't just schooling, it's being curious and learning about the world around you and being the best citizen that you can be. That being said, I agree one hundred percent with Craig, that I think we do a great disservice to students who might be miserable and be unsuccessful, and get an awful lot of debt, going through a traditional four-year school where they could go become a plumber, or a carpenter, or something where they could have an honorable job and make a really good wage, and perhaps have a chance to feed their uplums, whereas, uh, working in a large corporation. But no, anything less than a hundred percent graduation rate is a common citizen, unacceptable.
And we'll have one more question after all four candidates. How do we improve morale in the Osposa School District? That's for six candidates.
How do you improve morale? I think it's easy, communicate. I feel that communication is the hard part. Open communication between administrators and staff, between administrators, superintendent, and the board. Everybody's gotta have the same message, be on the same page, you know in the same direction, and that's gotta be a very clear direction. And I think that starts from the top, top down. Leaders are the ones that set the message and, and direction of, of what the school goes. And you gotta make sure that everybody's aware of that, and that's where we're gonna go. You're always gonna have some people that don't approve, don't like it. You gotta, you gotta talk to those individuals, listen to their concerns, hear why they feel that way. And, you know, you gotta let, you gotta let them have voice. Really do.
I guess I'm not supposed to just say what I'm saying, but I think people's concerns need to be heard, and I think that it starts from the top down, and being, uh, as pleasant and positive as we can be, and listening to people's concerns, and, uh, being able to know their value, and that they can listen to. Now, uh, you know, our school system is in talking with staff, right? I, it's, I think the question is being with staff, with students, that's what it's about. There, there does certainly come a point where this is the program where we, you know, have decided on that this is what we're doing, and you listen to their concerns, and you say, yes, you know, and I hear you, and I know your heart's in the right place, and, but this is what we're doing, and if you don't like it, you know, you're free to search for others.
The third person in our, that communication pieces is at the crux of the matter, and I think that communication needs to be face-to-face, and with administrators boards, that the first part of that communication needs to be listening, hearing what those concerns are. I would hope the district is using data to make those decisions, that everyone is involved in looking at what that data looks like, whether it's good, bad, ugly, that it's out on the table and it's very open. I think there needs to be concerted effort to work together for solutions, to use the data to then decide, are there solutions working, and if it is, then celebrate that here. But if it's not, then again, work together for an alternate way of handling the problem.
So Charlie, I think part of the, the situation you get with morale is, education right now is in a state of pain. And as teachers, teachers are very, uh, routine-oriented. So when you get them out of their routine, or they have to change a lot, they, it's hard, it's hard for us to change. So what you have to do with morale is, if you're gonna make change, and I've always said this before, you have to make change, and you have to do it in three steps. You gotta throw it out there, and then you gotta die, because everybody's gonna give you a lot of bad feedback, oh, no, we can't do this, I don't wanna do it, I don't, and then you let it set for a while, and then you come back, and you have some dialogue. Then you have some give and take, and you talk about it a little bit, and then you let it burn, and then you let it set for a little bit, and then you come back to it, and then hopefully, everybody can kind of be on the same page. Or you've had that chance to have that dialogue, to say, hey, we're working together, we need to do this. And I think that's where you have to, you have, it takes time, and that's with morale, you just have to make sure, like everyone else said, you guys communicate what you're thinking, and you gotta do it often, and then you gotta give them some time. So that's how I see it.
And we'll turn now to closing statements, and we'll begin with Sharla.
The end. I guess I appreciated this learning experience tonight. Surprisingly, I've enjoyed it, and listening to the other candidates. Surprisingly, I've enjoyed it and listening to the other candidates with their complaints and getting a better idea of concerns, especially if you're terrorists, questions, what are some of the issues that people will face in this next couple of years as board members? Thank you all for coming. I do look forward, hopefully, to working with the board and helping move our district forward.
First of all, I picked up Ossaloos News, put us warm on. That's always a good question. I won't go back to a comment I made earlier about the teacher's salary and the healthcare, I'm not sure that came out, but. I'm very passionate with healthcare. I have a child and I spent numerous days and weeks in the hospital. That is a huge benefit, and I think that's a great benefit our teachers have. I don't want to get the impression that it's something I think we need to take away from them or have them increase. I'm just using that as comparison to the salary and the package that's there to look at the total. Total package, Ossaloos does pretty well as far as paying their staff, I think. And teachers, that's why we have such great teachers in the district and we're not losing them. I would, I just want to test base and make sure that, I'm a big open speaker, so I don't always come out flaring on my, on my comments, I think. I hope to come out and vote. I've had a lot of fun, I've done a lot of stuff on here and and I've said nothing against Eric, he's a great guy, excited he came out and ran. I don't, I'm not done. I want four more years on here, I think we're making good progress and we got a good board. I think we're heading in the right direction and we've opened up a lot of doors in the last couple of years. Not a big promoter myself, so I guess I'll let my, let my opponent talk. Good luck, Eric.
Thank you. I, I heard a comment one time say that there'd been a survey, a real survey, and people talked about what their greatest fear were. And the fear of public safety was actually granning above the fear of dying, which we might guess most of us, and I can say that for myself here, apparently would rather be the person in the coffin versus the person giving you. That being said, this was actually a lot more fun than what I thought it would be. And I think that everyone up here is very passionate about education and, and wants to do the best they can for the Ossaloos Community School District. And I'd just like to say that I think I can bring something to the mix between my business experience and being a property owner and owning two successful businesses and also my friends and my wife in education. And I hope we'll get a chance to serve. And good luck to my opponent as well.
Again, I wanted to thank everybody for having this chance to express their views and answer your questions. What I look at in the future as a school board is we're working together. And when we talk about working together, if we're facing some financial times, I think we have to talk to the, the teacher unions or the teacher union to say, hey, this is where we're at. We gotta kind of give and take, even when we're talking about money, if we're talking about salaries, we're talking about benefits. Well, you've gotta lay that out, remember I was talking about change, well, you need to do that and you need to do that often. We've had the discussion with academics. We said, we're not where we want to be, we need to make some changes. And we set some goals, so I think we're, we're working together on that aspect. But the last thing I'd like to leave with is we gotta have higher expectations. We gotta have higher expectations with our students. We gotta have higher expectations with their teachers. We have to have higher expectations with our administration. And as a board, we have to have high expectations with ourselves and, and the policy that we, we implement. So that's just kind of how I like to sum it up. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you to our candidates. Do have a couple of reminders for those who will be voting this year. Absentee ballots are available right now. They can be cast up until 11:00 AM next Tuesday at the Mahasak County Auditor's Office. The auditor's office will be open Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. It's located at the courthouse, 106 South Hurst Street, for you to cast your ballot. Due to Labor Day, the office will not be open on September 7. Your last opportunity to cast absentee is up till 11:00 AM next Tuesday. For those who choose to go to the polls, the polls will open next Tuesday at 12:00 PM. They will remain open until 8:00 PM. Regardless of where you live in the school district, there are two vote centers and you can vote at either one of them. Those vote centers are the ICU extension office located at 212 North I Street or the Old Grant School located at 715 B Avenue East. If you have any questions about the information I just shared, please contact the Mahasak County Auditor's Office at 641-673-7148. A big thank you to all of our candidates for participating this evening. Thank you to Ossaloos News for hosting this event. And thank you to Smokey Rope for their, using their facility this evening. And we hope to see you all at the polls next Tuesday.